Yeah, Mike said.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one wasn't thrown in.
But I just never want to do that.
Oh, yeah, that's much better.
Put you in the right chair.
I'm calling this March meeting. There's two. We do have, we don't have this little agenda session that we expect to have along executive sessions, so. And six, I don't really have that many voices. I'm trying to speak up. So on the agenda, in addition to reviewing the minutes, we've got to go through a couple of various committee reports, as well as assignments on annual goals for general committee. And the Ed committee is going to give a longer slideshow on their process. At the end of the meeting, we will go into executive discussion to discuss pending litigation, as well as strategy for collective bargaining. Because being so an open session, it would be different from our position. Okay, any questions? I think you need the microphone a little closer. It's a little hard to hear down this side.
Or you can shout it into ours.
Yeah.
Cheaper skin.
We'll replay. And I'd like to make a note that the meeting is being recorded as well. If there are any changes or questions on the agenda? If not, let's review the minutes from the last board meeting. Sarah and I worked on these because Allison was not able to attend. This is the first time we're doing them in Board on Track. So that's why they're in a different format. It was pretty easy to use, so our hope is that we can start moving to Board on Track for our minutes, because then we can automatically publish.
The one thing I would note is when I downloaded the packet, the PowerPoint was messed up. So converting it over to PDF, so if you're, if you're going to submit a PowerPoint, it's probably best to convert it to PDF in the beginning.
Yeah, they actually do.
Rather than have Board on Track convert it before you.
Yeah. That's very interesting that happens to you, because obviously, there was no conversion between PCs.
One would.
So. Word documents seem to be okay, though, right? Are there any questions on the minutes? Any motions that could be made?
Do a motion to approve.
Got any motion? And second, all in favor? The faculty rep update, and I'll check.
You want me to do that now while you check? So I sent out an email today to the staff. My term is up on June 30th, and I am not eligible to run again. Just as a reminder, the rules were changed about the faculty rep position. It used to be that the faculty rep could serve three terms. It is now limited to two one-year terms. So you guys are almost rid of me. And then you have someone new to trick into doing all this work. So that email went out today. Our goal is to get somebody on board. The elections will be held on April 13th. That's less than a month from now, and we'll have the results by that day, because Sarah knows amazing. And then hopefully, that person will be able to shadow me for the next, through the remainder of the term, so that they sort of are able to pick up July 1st. I think one of the things about this role is, or really any of the board positions, as you all know, when you're a new member, it takes a bit of time to kind of figure out what happens and to get up to speed. So this is about a month earlier than we've done the elections for this role. Then, it was definitely a month earlier than last year, and it's always been sort of a little bit later. So we're doing that a little bit earlier, so because I can't serve that third term, and you can't get three years out of the person, it sort of makes a little bit more sense to kind of get somebody on board earlier. So, other than that, I don't think I really have a lot to add.
Great, thank you. There was no one signed up for public comments, so Liz can do it.
Sure, so the, some of the things that have come up, they're mostly around communication this month, and I know we've addressed this in the past. I did send a specific email to Dr. McCleary this afternoon, so that he can address it, because it's not really necessarily a board thing. But there were just a couple of things that came up tonight that, just to be aware of. I know that we have come up with a date for an evening coffee, which had been requested. Unfortunately, found out tonight that it coincides with the AMSA Red Sox game, so we might want to change that date, just as an FYI. And another thing that came up would be, and this, as we discussed with the rumor mill, if we could get more informal conversations going, that might alleviate some of the rumors. One example, just tonight, was around graduation and only having four invites. And again, it was determined pretty quickly that it was a rumor, but because no one, you know, could confirm or deny through informal communication, it just kind of blew up. So just some examples of what's happening with the lack of communication sometimes. And that is about it. It was really just around communication. The one thing in terms of positive on the communication side, the newsletter has been received well, so that's a good thing. And additionally, I think this last coffee where we talked about technology, there was a lot of good parent engagement in that particular one, and I don't want to discuss it too much, because Dr. McCleary might be addressing it. But there were a lot of parents who were eager to help with technology in terms of going forward with AMSA, so I thought that was another positive, just for you, Mike.
Thank you. I asked for positives.
Yes. And that's it.
Thank you.
I will turn it over to the Ed.
Thank you. So last time, there was some talk, a discussion of the faculty survey results, the check-in survey, and one of the responses was for myself to come up with a plan. And so I spoke with the faculty rep, Ms. Bowen, and also conferred with the board chair, and Rick Kamal, the vice chair, on some different ideas. And we settled on the idea of having an opportunity for smaller groups, sections of the school, to come and speak with me and the faculty rep. So we've set up a couple of dates. We had one earlier this week, and I sent out an email inviting everyone, and also announced it at the recent professional development ed. We had a number of faculty take us up on the offer, they came in, and we talked about some of the concerns that they might have in that area. And we're having another one next week. We tried to make it possible for people from different sections of the school to come in at different times, or they could come in for both, or none, whatever. Wanted to sort of leave it open-ended. So we got some feedback the other night at that meeting, and we're going to have another one next week.
Next week, yeah.
How many people came?
Four.
Three, one couldn't make it at the last minute. We were going to have four, and then I heard from that person who couldn't make it, she's going to come next week.
So Jessica, you're involved in, you're part of this partnership kind of planning?
Yep. Yep, Dr. McCleary came to me and said, do you think this would work, and how should we, you know, and what's the best way to set up? And we set up two separate meetings, and they're.
Great.
Excellent.
Are they open to anyone, or is it just specific?
No, it's open, it's open to any faculty, well, it's faculty, because that was the group we're trying to get more feedback from, so it's open to any faculty. And specifically was focused on the topic that seemed cause most concern, which was those who answered that there was almost no trust in the leadership. I think that was something on the order of maybe, I can't remember the exact, it's like 26, perhaps, respondents, I believe, something like that, out of, say, 70, so roughly a third or so, more or less.
And we, yeah, so the one we had yesterday was middle school teachers, and the one we'll have next week is upper school teachers. So although people can come to either or both, if that's really the schedule works, but we had all middle school teachers yesterday, so.
So I guess just, did the people that showed up feel that was an accurate representation of the move? Did they have any insights into, you know, why that was the feedback that they gave, and what would they be doing differently?
Well, the conversation went on for, what, hour at least?
Yeah, hour and a half, I think.
And so they ranged over a number of topics. And again, we focused, in the message I sent out, I said, you know, this is your concerns regarding the leadership, specifically in the area of trust. And so I think it was pretty wide-ranging. There was, there were comments on, I can't even remember now, there was a lot of.
Teacher retention.
Teacher retention. I think professional development. Oh, some, some had to do with salary.
Yeah, salary was an issue, so that was kind of tricky, because of course, that's in another, right, we can't.
Yeah, it sort of, it ranged over quite a bit. I think sometimes it didn't specifically deal with the trust issue as much as a sort of general, general interest or general concerns, or.
Yeah.
What did it accomplish?
Well, I think one thing that it accomplished is it gave people an opportunity to come and speak with both of us and talk about their concerns. I took notes, I think probably Ms. Bowen took notes as well. So I think at this point, we're trying to be, allow people to have an opportunity to, specifically, if they have the concerns in this area, to come and talk with us about.
And are they, again, on the sample size of four, so are they seeming to appreciate it? Are they, I already told you this.
So some of the feedback I have, and I, it happened yesterday, so I think there's, it's not a good sample size, but some of the feedback I got was, I had more than one person kind of approach me and say that it was a little odd for them to say, come to a meeting and tell me why you don't trust me. That was sort of how they took the meeting, and so they felt like it was a little bit like, well, if I'm telling you I have trust issues, like having a meeting where I tell you that seems awkward to me. So one of the persons, that person, one of the people that came to the meeting yesterday very had clearly sort of, getting a pulse of more than one voice, and brought concerns of others with, with him. So I think that that was helpful. But other people, I think, appreciated the fact that they had a chance. I think some of the questions are about access and about, and trust, and so I think people did appreciate the opportunity to, to take that step of reaching out, or that a step was taken to reach out to them.
Do people seem to feel better at the end of the meeting than they did at the beginning?
I haven't talked to anybody who, I haven't, I can't, I don't know.
So you couldn't tell, and moved the role.
Well, there's three people, right?
Yeah. They, you know, it wasn't certainly like, wow, you know, like, there were no balloons at the end, we had no confetti drop planned, so I don't know, I haven't, I haven't checked in with people.
Often, there's a perceptible drop in hostility, though. That's, that's.
Well, I don't think anybody was hostile.
No, the meeting was, didn't feel hostile at all.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
It was an opportunity for people to air concerns that they had, and then there was a dialogue, we talked, you know, in some cases, I think the example of the, there was, there was talk about giving some sort of merit pay, right? And, you know, this is something that has to do with the ongoing negotiations, so I, you know, the conversation ranged over a number of areas, but I'm not sure there's anything we could say at the time about merit, merit pay.
And if it's about trust, it's not about the item anyhow?
Well, yes, that's right.
Right.
So I guess there was the forum there, but it didn't always stick to the trust issue, and.
I guess, you know, what I'd like to see is going forward, and again, sample size of four, this is a dress rehearsal.
Yeah.
Is that, you know, the fact that it happens is good, the fact that people come is good, the fact that the tone remains congenial through most of the meeting is another good thing, all of which we should be paying attention to and tracking in summary, and, yeah, actually, I think a whole meeting on this subject with a lack of hostility is win.
Yeah. Dr. McCleary, are you thinking of any kind of a timeline, such as collect feedback, these small groups, for the next 30 days or so, and then you've got to report back to them your sort of recommendations based on that feedback, with some kind of plans of what might be implemented to try to address some of those, any kind of timeline you think now?
Well, we have another meeting next week, and then I suppose if there was a desire for an additional meeting, you know, if people felt like, well, they couldn't make either one of those meetings, we could have another one. And then after that, I think I could provide some kind of a summary of what we talked about. I think, as I pointed out already, some of the things we talked about were not necessarily on, in an area where anything right away could be done, or they, or maybe things are being done in another area, for example, in the, in the ongoing talks, that wouldn't necessarily be immediately my, something I could act on. I think we agreed that some of the things, and Ms. Bowen might have her opinion on this, I think we agreed that some of the things, perhaps things could be done, others, perhaps there were more just philosophical or, you know, vision differences. I think one of the things that came up was, well, what's your vision for the school? And I pointed out that that is something we've been talking about in some of the professional development meetings, as recently, frankly, as last week. And I think that was acknowledged in some respect.
Yeah, that was actually a nice moment of the meeting. One of the people at the meeting said, oh, Dr. McCleary answered something about, you know, this is my vision of what the school is, and, you know, he said that was the sort of, the clearest that he had heard it, and it was, I thought that was a sort of interesting moment, because I felt like I'd heard you say that so many times, and I feel like at every PD I've heard you say that. So, you know, I think that that's, we've clearly have identified that communication is, is, is an issue, so it's interesting that both sides are trying to communicate, but somehow there's some kind of gap there, that somehow it's not sort of making a bridge.
That speaks to the value of repetition.
Yeah, it does.
The point is it's brought for different people.
And it also speaks to the value of a face-to-face meeting like we had. I also don't want to sort of give a, sort of a rosy picture that is unrealistic. I think that there were some things in the meeting that got discussed that, we're clear that, that there are differences that can't just easily be fixed. I think the one of teacher retention will, will be, it will be difficult. And then I was actually talking to my husband about it when I got home, and I said, you know, on the first day of class, I teach an AP class, and I, I say to the students, here's what my expectations are, and here's the homework for the whole year, and it's overwhelming for them, and, you know, here's who I am, and maybe it wasn't what you were expecting, and I expect in the first month, week or two, that several of them will be down at guidance getting out of my class. And that's not necessarily a sign that there's something wrong with the student or with me as a class, but that, that expectations are not there, and there's, there's some sort of healthy. So I think anytime you see a new administrative change, as people sort of adjust to things, it's, it's not going to be instantly a magic wand is waved and, woof, everything is better. So, and I don't, it's awkward for me as a teacher to say that, because I certainly don't want to say, hey, teachers, get out of here, quick. I don't think it's like that, but I think there's sort of, it's natural that there will, to have all teachers staying all the time is also not necessarily a sign of a healthy institution.
Yeah, I just, I think it would be helpful, or it'd be great, if there was some low-hanging proof that somehow could be identified after all the feedback comes in, where there are one or two things, where there's just empowerment of certain, you know, individuals or faculty or departments here, just a couple of things that might be visible, I think would be great, or something like that, can I, if you can.
So, so, you know, I just, I feel the need to sort of jump in and remind the context here. We had, we had the faculty survey responses, the initial view of the responses was not particularly positive. As we took a look at the responses, there was an indication that in fact, that the actual analysis of it suggested an overall movement in the right direction, that we had asked Dr. McCleary to come up with some specific examples. Some things that, you know, we talked about was, you know, discussion, you know, sort of an open discussion, laying things out on a table, you know, in terms of, for example, vision, changes in policy, you know, sort of, you know, how are we going to get from here to there, and those types of things. I don't know that any of those efforts that are actually going to work to engender trust are going to work, you know, in the short term. And this is, you know, and I don't have an expectation of that. My expectation is to hear sort of what I have heard, which is steps that have been taken in order to try to, you know, sort of engage in a discussion. Agreement is not necessary, consensus is not necessary, just, you know, discussion, open, honest, sort of laying things out, and, you know, and speak to reality. I think that's, you know, that's what, that's what we asked for, so I'm, you know, I'm sort of satisfied with what I'm hearing.
Any other questions on that?
Another question.
So what are the next steps, so then, based on all this stuff, what are the next steps?
Well, the next step is to have the next meeting, and then if necessary, an additional one, and put together a summary. And then, to Ev's point, maybe have something that could be a key, or one or two things that could be, you know, announced as a way of possibly.
Something that's easy to execute.
Respond.
Great.
There was some mention of the evening coffee, that is true, we're having the evening coffee, because there was a significant, a number of parents who said they thought it would be helpful to occasionally intersperse the morning coffees with the evening, so we, we had, we were aware that there was that, I think, the vice principal was notified that there was a conflict, that we decided that, since we had announced it already at the last, that we were going to have it, and we've been having it on the Tuesday every time, we just keep it, and then, we're going to continue to have them, so. It's tough in the spring to have every night, sort of not have a conflict with anything else, especially if a lot of people are doing things, but we are going to continue to have them. And we also decided that we would have a second event about technology and the service of education, because that was so popular, it engendered a lot of discussion the last time, and we thought we'd give another opportunity for the people that couldn't make that in the morning to have, to come to the evening. But going, going forward, we're going to have these regularly, every Tuesday, you know, I think it's the second Tuesday of the month, and so there'll be opportunities to have discussions on other topics. It's helpful, I think, to have it focused on something, so that there's a, you know, everybody can kind of be brought back to the topic, and then we can sort of exhaust that topic, you know, if we have to have another one, that's fine, then move on to another one, as opposed to just, I think the, the real challenge always is to kind of bring it away from individual concerns to the sort of general. And there's been a lot of talk about opportunities to present vision, and that's what I'm trying to do.
Do you announce the topic? Do you say?
Yes, yeah, that's sent out, but email.
Great.
And also the news, I'd like to mention, I don't want to go in too long, but the issue of communication has come up a number of times, and we did respond to that by having the newsletter published last month. We're going to publish it every month, which I would, I know, I looked into the history of the school, and there hasn't been a monthly newsletter. There have been quarterly letters that have gone out, but this is the first time that there's been a monthly. So we feel like that's moving in the right direction for communication, as I, as I think the coffees are as well.
Dr. McCleary, a quick question. I received some emails from parents who are really pleased with this newsletter, and.
I have.
Oh, yeah, it's happening, though. We heard that, the update. A couple connected the two. They said they thought it'd be really useful if you can opine on a topic before a coffee in the newsletter, or recap kind of some highlights of the discussion from the coffee and the subsequent newsletter. So just keep some, a cadence of what that would be, and I think it's just another way to reinforce for people, keep their dialogue going.
That's good feedback.
Yeah, that is good feedback. We're going to be talking about technology, here's what I think, then you sort of know what to come and talk about.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I like that. It's not my meeting, but.
We'll move on to Chair Business. We have an ongoing complaint of, we have a.
I think just from the standpoint of, I'm not intimate with the conversation that you and I conferred, which is that the one individual that was, the complaint had to do with whether that person met the criteria for being a resident of our core towns is being addressed by DEES at this point, and so actively as a AMSA complaint committee, we're not actively addressing it, because it's being addressed by DEES at this point.
I think they actually, they have come back with a response, and the response was that the school had done everything appropriately in terms of keeping with the policy of the actual residence being important to whether or not you could be included in the core towns, or whether you would be in the outside ways, so. They came back, they took a while, longer than they actually do actually, to make the decision, but they wanted to look into every aspect of it, coming back saying that the school had actually done what it was supposed to do in terms of this particular application.
When was that reported, completely?
When did it come back? Two weeks ago, I hope, or like a week ago.
Has that been, has that, I assume the individual involved would have gotten a response as well.
That's correct.
Finance.
Finance? So we will focus on February at this point in time, start top line tuition. As we talked about last month, we're seeing a $50K per month reduction in tuition based on our actual enrollment numbers as opposed to our pre-enrollment numbers. We were being compensated $25,000 more a month than we should have been. Now, to make up for that, we're going to get the $25,000 back each month, plus 25, so that's, we're going to, we're going to see roughly 45,000, 50,000 through the rest of the year. We're submitting our final enrollment numbers. There's not been a material change from what we had submitted in December to now, so we don't expect any further, you know, material changes in what the tuition reimbursement will be.
Can you just go all the way over to the end and see what that impact is going to be for the full year?
Sure. So if we look at what we're forecasting at the end of the year, so we're forecasting it will end up at 12.4 million in tuition. Our original budget was for 12.7. I believe our number last year, off the top of my head, was 12.6, is I think where we were last year. So we're looking at coming in about $270,000 lower than what, what we had budgeted. Grants and donations, this is, at this point in time, so the annual giving campaign really hasn't kicked in, and we haven't had a lot of corporate giving at this point in time. This represents our entitlement grants and just money coming through. As we spend the money, we get reimbursed from, from the state through the entitlement grants. Miscellaneous income, again, this is the minimum amount, basically representing interest on our holdings and things like that. Food services, food services came in a little under budget, you know, again, as we've seen all year, food services, the income that we take in through the school lunch program has been running lower than what we had budgeted. Less people are participating in the school lunch program than we had anticipated. You'll see on the core funding side, we look at the year's date number, that we're spending less than we thought we were normally to be as well, so those two coincide. Student programs came in a little higher than what we had been budgeting. There were SAT prep fees that came through, there were in Jan, we budgeted in January that actually came through in February. If we went back and looked at this number last month, we would see that it was about $8,000 lower than what we had budgeted, so it netted pretty close to what we were looking at, just a timing difference of one month there. And then athletic programs, again, just from a timing perspective, getting in a little bit, you know, sign-ups, basketball and wrestling came through. Student transportation, so on student transportation. We collected 120, we collected approximately 110,000, and we have about 12,000 in the couch receivables at this point in time, which is what represents the 123 there, and then we expect about a $5,000 reimbursement from the state, which gets us to the 128,000 we're projecting for the year. So total income came in right at 1.1, just a little bit less than what we have been budgeting. On the salaries front, you're going to see the salaries came in lower this month than what we have been forecasting. This is consistent with what we've been seeing all year, and we've talked about, there are a number of positions that are not filled at this juncture in time, and then there are some sped positions and IT positions that we don't have full time, but we're incurring consulting costs for them at this point in time. And as we budget for next year, we'll be looking at whether we move those back into the salary line, or we continue to contract for, but we'll at least have the budget matched up to whatever the reality for next year is going to be. Parole taxes and fringe, as we've talked about, continues to come in a little higher than we had budgeted. So last year, we had approximately 80 people participating, you know, in the health insurance programs, the biggest component of the fringe section here. This year, we've got about 10% more people participating, so we have 86, 86 people participating at this point in time, so it came in higher than what we were anticipating. Professional development, a little lower than what we forecast. We still believe that the teachers are going to take advantage of the 30,000 that's out there for tuition reimbursement. When we took a look at where we are at this point in time, what we think we still have coming in, you know, come pretty close to that $30,000 number, so that's a good thing. We want the teachers to be, you know, taking additional courses that are in line with curriculum that they're delivering, so we see that as a good thing, and are happy that that is being, being used. Instructional supplies, mostly right in line there, you have 1,380 variance there. Student programs, you know, we're looking at 229% variance. I will acknowledge that the variance is big, but let's look at the absolute dollars that we're talking about for the month here. So we were budgeting 5,000, we came in 11,000 for a variance of 6,000. So drama club and some other things came through here. Food services, as I talked about, so in general, if we look at where we are for food services, we're going to have to adjust our year-end forecast here, but through, through February of this year, we've been trending lower than what we had expected in terms of food services expense. If people are buying less lunches, we're going to have less costs for lunches, so that makes sense there.
So we're off by, we're, we're spending more or spending less on lunch?
We are receiving, people are buying less lunches, so our income from food services is lower than what we had budgeted, okay? So if we sell less lunches, we're going to have less income.
And then it bounces on the other side.
If we sell less lunches, we're going to have less expenses, because we're buying fewer lunches, you know, for, for the kids. So they're mirrored up.
Okay.
We're seeing what we expect, we're seeing lower expense, with lower revenue, we expect to see lower expenses.
I, I, yeah, I just, I just ask, because I, this is the first year we've used this food company, isn't it? I didn't know if it was related to that.
I, yeah, so I mean, from a dollars and cents perspective, I can't make any inference from that, from why are people buying less lunches? I defer to the, you know, the parent community on why they're buying less lunches. My kids are lazy and they don't make lunches, so we bought from the old two food services vendor complaining, who buy from the new food services vendor, and I've only heard that it's better, but there's a different, you know, feedback. I'd say we need to take that up with the school on why people are buying less lunches. We will adjust our forecast based on what we're seeing, is what is what we...
I am also lazy, Tom, and buy my lunch here every day, because I don't like to make my lunch.
So athletics came in a little bit higher, so again, if we went, you remember when we went back to the, you know, the fee side, it was, the income side was a little higher, the expense side was a little higher. On the student transportation, our student transportation expenses, so our student transportation revenue is strictly revenue that we take in from the regional bus program. Our student transportation expenses are principally the regional bus program, but are also, any buses for field trips, athletics, anything like that flows through the student transportation line item here. So again, the biggest driver of student transportation is the regional bus program, which is billed on the number of, you know, days that schools are in session. February is a short month, and February had a vacation week, so our bill was not what it was there at least of that.
What about the snow days, Tom, do they go well?
I don't know if we get billed. I don't believe we get billed for snow days. I'd have to look at the contract to see how that, yeah, it was. Yeah. Lease plan and taxes, again, right in line with what we were expecting there. Our facilities expenses, so again, if you pulled out your January budget, you would see that the facilities was actually over. We were billed for the copiers, as we renegotiated the lease, we were billed twice for the copiers in January, which is a big chunk of this facilities expense, and then we didn't have the fees in February, so that's why that one was coming in lower. Utilities, right in line with what we were expecting. IT was just a little bit lower. Legal, so legal was obviously substantially lower than what we were expecting. One, our lawsuit with the landlord continues to run at a lower burn rate than we were expecting. And two, we actually received a reimbursement for legal costs, hence the reason this is a negative number on the expense line item. So always good to get reimbursement from our insurance company. And appreciation expenses and other operating expenses. So the bottom line, we came in with a surplus of 120,000 for the month. We were actually budgeting a loss of 25,000 for the month. If you remember, we had budgeted for a loss of about, or actually, we had a loss, an actual loss, not a budget, we had an actual loss of about 13,000 last month. So there is variability from, you know, from month to month. At this point in time, we're still projecting a healthy surplus, you know, for this year, but given the potential timing for the lawsuit, the current legal costs are going to spike substantially near the end of the year, and then reimbursement for those wouldn't be forthcoming until down the road. But that's where we are at this juncture in time. I would entertain any questions on February financials at this point in time.
Like you have no questions? Thank you.
So I'm number one, the fundraising campaign ended this morning. We had seven trustees out of 12 in, which is nothing to brag about. Over the course of the day, two or three more have come in, or, or here are in process, so I think we're up to the nine, which is a lot better and still not good. If we could, if we had, we all thank you all who have given, and those of you who haven't, if you could please make a decision and do something in the next day or so, because we are due to send the next reminder out, this email reminder from Pauline to the community. And if we could announce at that time, would have been nice to announce tonight that the board was 100% in, but if we can announce by Friday, when that memo goes out, everybody that we're 100% in, that's a positive statement that we can make. And, you know, we're going forward. We also have, you've all received an email from, is it next Tuesday, the 29th? The Future Leaders of America Club is going to be doing a phone-a-thon, and they've asked us to come and help, so anyone who can come for an hour and make, do some dialing for dollars. We did this last couple of years ago, and it was really, it was a lot of fun, the kids loved it. And I think the parents, I mean, I think the parents also enjoy talking to trustees. I had the pleasure of calling the guy who owns Sorento's, and I had no idea, like, I was new. He said, "Well, do you know?" I'm going to say, "Well, no, I don't." He said, "Well, I kind of do a lot for the school." "That's cool, thank you. I really appreciate it." So if we could do that, that would be great. We have adopted goals for the year, which are in a package, right? But they're essentially to do some incremental improvements to the campaign, to begin implementing alumni program, and to try and reach a deeper understanding of the other fundraising constituencies and what they're trying to accomplish around the school.
What does that mean?
So we've got the Booster Club, we've got Night After Prom, we've got prom, we've got PTO, so lots of people who are trying to raise money to do things around the school and we're trying to get, just really try to understand what people are trying to do and how they're trying to do it, and maybe there are ways that we can work together. But it starts with just understanding.
I feel there's a complaint, maybe two weeks ago, that two different groups were having a fundraising dinner thing, it was the same night, I'll sit at tomorrow, all that sort of thing, they just, you know, not coordinating the efforts.
We're not going in with an agenda to control anything.
Yeah, just kind of, yeah. Oh, yeah, I feel like someone from here is asking me for money every other day, so...
As long as you listen to me first.
I got you, Chris, I got you.
So Chris, you have on your goals here that, that, oh, these are going to be done in June. What are you doing the second half of?
Hmm?
On your goals, you have these, your timing as of June for all of them.
Let me take summer off. No, I, we, we did our planning in terms of the academic year, so it was before the...
Okay.
You can move some dates back if that'll make you feel better.
Well, board bills are generally annual, instead of...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that could be, and actually, like, the data on the, on the alumni thing, might something, you know, we'll have something to report in June. We might have more to report.
More to report later.
After the homecoming in November. So I'll adjust that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ken, Education Committee.
So, thanks, Tom. So the Education Committee has been meeting monthly since September, obviously been meeting monthly since before that, but I guess under my time as Chair, it's been meetings since September. Part of this has been working to determine sort of our priorities and be able to bring to the Board some recommended solutions. Our March meeting last week was, we had a really rich discussion. I had come prepared to sort of report out to the Board on, you know, sort of our annual committee report on progress and recommendations. Our recommendations are not ready, and so I just thought I'd give you sort of a quick update of progress today, and that I think it would probably take us another meeting or two to finish out our recommendations and probably bring that at the May meeting. So I want to talk a little bit about the membership, the mission of the, the committee, sort of the tasks that we're, we're given to work on, the goals that we've been working towards this year, and some, some of the challenges that we've met. So Tom's already brought up the committee membership. So we have, you know, a great committee of people, so we have Liz and Jess as the parent, faculty rep. Dr. McCleary and Dr. Curry have been coming in and providing their perspective. We have five parents who are sort of formal members of the committee, they're listed there, a couple of whom are here tonight. And then we have several others who are sort of regular attendees, Laura, Beshline, Linda Edwards, Nidia, Kier, Marnie Hooker. There are a couple others that have been coming, so we have a good meeting, so. Should be the next one, thanks, Tom. So, so the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education lays out in its charter school performance criteria, three areas of school accountability. So we have organizational viability, academic success, and faithfulness to the charter. And so the Education Committee is responsible to the Board of Trustees for carrying out the two of them. So responsible for monitoring academic excellence, ensuring progress towards the objectives set out in the accountability plan that we have, there's obviously a lot of things, but in the areas of academic excellence, those are what we're supposed to report out to the Board on, and ensuring faithfulness in terms of charter. So honestly, the, you know, the committee being chartered by the Board doesn't act on its own, but in accordance with the bylaws, we are to come to you, present the results of our votes to the Board, who then, then the Board as a whole can either adopt or reject those recommendations. And so I just want to sort of lay out that the committee here, the committee, the Education Committee, has a very rich and difficult charter in terms of things that we're supposed to do around academic excellence, ensuring progress towards the objectives, and ensuring faithfulness to the charter. So we could have the next one, thanks. So one of the, in one of the books that I read on sort of governance, one of the concepts it brought up was making sure that, you know, you're engaged in pre-board tasks, in other words, doing stuff and bringing it then to the Board, as opposed to sub-board tasks, in other words, working on things below the Board of Trustees level. And so that's one of the things that I've been talking to the committee about, is that we really need to be engaged in these pre-board tasks, examine in collaboration with the executive director how academic programs success and faithfulness to the charter is to finally sustain. So this, you know, sort of brings up one of the early challenges here, because, you know, in, in the case of the Finance Committee, and that exists, Finance Committee is easy, but there is, you know, I think over time has developed a greater clarity on the, on what the Board is supposed to do with regard to finances and what the school does with regard to finances. Governance Committee is sort of the same, same type thing. But in the case of the Education Committee, it is very easy to move from sort of that governance perspective of, of, you know, trying to define a framework for the work to be done, and ensuring that goals of that framework are met. It's easy to move from that down into the details of sort of managing and, at the operational level, okay? So, so in doing this, we have to look at a couple of things. We're all familiar with the AMSA Charter, and obviously faithfulness to the Charter, we have to, we have to look to that charter. The Charter, of course, is old and, meaning that it has, our interpretation of faithfulness to that charter has evolved over time. We have an accountability plan that's done every five years. Most recently, Dr. McCleary had redone that accountability plan and brought it to us to, for approval, and in that accountability plan, there are a number of key design elements. These are design elements that connect back to the charter. These are things that, in terms of our design as a school, these are the elements, key design elements, that we're supposed to achieve and objectives against that, as well as sort of the related measures and data that go along with that. We also have to take a look at curriculum and instructional policies that we bring to the Board for consideration. It's another area where it's very easy to move down into sort of the management and operational aspect. But, you know, the Mass General Law and the Code of Mass Regulation specify that it's the Board that is supposed to approve policies, and specifically around curriculum. And so there's, there's some definition that we have been struggling with, that we have been working with, again, having Dr. McCleary and Dr. Curry at the meeting, as well as Jess bringing in her perspective as a, as a member of the faculty has been really helpful. One of the other things that we're tasked to do is put together training and awareness activities, not only for the committee, but for the Board as a whole. This training relating to how do we carry out our responsibilities as a Board with regard to academic program success? An example of this, I think, is, you know, that, that I was very cognizant of, is when, when Dr. McCleary brought the accountability plan to us. I'm not sure that we collectively as a Board were prepared to have discussions about that. In the end, we ended up in a really good place, because I think Dr. McCleary did a great job putting together accountability plans. But had we been in a position where we really needed to understand the connection of the AMSA Charter to the accountability plan through those key design elements and the objectives that are supposed to be put forward... that are supposed to be put forward, certainly me as a relatively newer member, but I think us collectively, I don't know that we were well-prepared to have that discussion. Again, we ended up in a good place, but that's an example where I think we could have some training.